Good morning and welcome to the first regular monthly meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen in May. Please rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Didn't you have another grandson that just graduated up in Chicago?
Welcome to this public meeting. It's not a public hearing. The Chair reserves the right to call upon any interested attendee on matters before the Board today. There are copies of the meeting's agenda along with any of the materials that are in the public session for consideration on the table as you come in. Item number two on our agenda is the approval of minutes. There were two sets of minutes that we were reviewing from April. The first one is dated April 11th. I just noticed one minor correction on one under updates, RTM. On mine it was RTN.
And also, I think we, I need to add, I believe I need to add that right at the end where it says Mr. Litback made a motion to appoint a three-member committee including the town attorney to investigate the flood incident, there was not a second. And then there was agreement with, but not a formal vote, to appoint a three-member committee with the town attorney. That should be added.
To designate three individuals. And I think Horse was the name. I don't think we had all three. I know Horse was one. That I recall, and Wayne himself.
Yeah, that is true. I think those were the only two whose names were mentioned.
There was not, I mean, there wasn't Cerny on like who he would depend upon for like some of the mechanical aspects, because some of it had to do with, I recall the...
I think we left the ball in Wayne's court.
Yeah, his discretion.
Yeah, so he should be doing that.
Great. Okay, so I'll make that adjustment.
Any other amendments, corrections? If not, I entertain a motion to approve those minutes as amended.
Civil.
Without objection. The next set relate to the April 25th meeting.
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Without objection. Item number three, first selectman updates. I just want to quickly run through a number of events, some of them community, some of them town-related. The first one is that Mr. Toner was good enough to stand in for me at the 61st Annual Greenwich Daffodil Society Awards Ceremony at Christ Church. Thank you for doing that. This is an annual event which really presents an opportunity to recognize all of those various garden clubs and individuals who work to beautify the town. I think that's the relevance here is that this is an integral part of the greening of Greenwich, is that these individuals are deeply committed to their endeavor to plant these throughout the town.
And it's a real eye-opener to see how many different types of daffodils there are.
Yeah, so thank you. On April 27th, I attended the American Red Cross Red and White Ball, which this year's theme was a salute to service and valor. They recognized Ron Howard for his contributions to relief efforts throughout the country. Right now, he is, he was unable to attend to accept the award, but he is out in California and he's working on producing what I would describe as a documentary about the California wildfires. And he's, he's said he's getting the perspective of those who have endured and survived, but giving a far more comprehensive view of the challenge that they present in the area. So he's a resident of Greenwich. The same evening, I attended the Greenwich Symphony Orchestra annual symphony swing. This year, they recognize Gail and Bob Lawrence for their support of the symphony over many decades. And the symphony is an organization that provides a great resource to our town and is performing at the Greenwich High School Performing Arts Center. On April 28th, the Greenwich Historical Society celebrated Greenwich landmarks. Two locations owned by the town were recognized, one of them being this building, the former high school, which was built in 1925. And reviewing the material, I thought one point of interest about this building and going back in time is that the cost associated in constructing this building back then was just over a million dollars. So think about it, in 1925, it cost a million dollars to build this building. It served as our high school until 1970, and since 1979, it's been our town hall. So without any financial analysis, I'll just say we've gotten our money's worth.
Be interesting to know what it would cost to replicate that today. I bet it's a better part of 25 to 50 million.
And half of it was torn down.
Really?
And that's a very good point. The rear portion, which I believe was constructed in 1934...
Oh, happened, or was separate and apart.
Was torn down in the mid-'70s as part of a referendum. And I believe the reasoning being they didn't want it to be occupied by government offices.
The theory being we would grow to fill it, I am sure.
The architect is gentleman by the name of James O. Batel. He co-founded the firm of Goldberg and Batel in Newark, New Jersey. And he was specialized in this design, which is Georgian Revival, and built a number of structures throughout New York, New Jersey. The Koskow School and the Western Greenwich Civic Center are two other buildings in Greenwich, which he designed. In addition, the present Connecticut, Central Connecticut State University up in New Britain was also designed there. But that was the one landmark. The other is the World War I obelisk on Greenwich Avenue. That was also recognized in what's presented as a plaque that is affixed in the, this corresponds to the next day's event, which was the Greenwich Historical Society kicked off Greenwich Preservation Month with "This Place Matters." And "This Place Matters" is really highlighting many of the historical structures still remaining in Greenwich in promoting education and awareness to the public and to owners as to the value these structures play in preserving Greenwich's rich and diverse history. So thank you to the historical society. On May 1st, very busy day, the UJA JCC held its 37th Annual Yom HaShoa Commemoration, which was held at Temple Shalom. And Selectman Sandy Litback was in attendance. And thank you, Sandy, for once again representing the town at this event, a very important. Simultaneously, I was here participating in the town of Greenwich's presentation of a proclamation for the Greenwich MAT designation. And MAT designation is a rigorous curriculum and exam designed for the medical community. It's a multi-faceted content, arms medical providers with critical information to appropriately risk stratify, assess vague signs and symptoms, and take rapid next steps in order to, in the order that breast and ovarian cancers are prevented or detected at early stages. This is a first-in-a-kind program. It's called MAT in honor of Kylie Zager's late mom, Marilyn Ann Trehan. She established that, this year, the actual program. And we were pleased to have with us Dr. Elena Ratner, who is an integral part of this inaugural program in educating primary care physicians as to the symptoms that are often masked for ovarian cancer, for other things. And there was a very poignant testimonial given by a Greenwich resident by the name of Diane Palace as to her experience with this. And fortunately, they detected it and she is surviving it. Very powerful program. I give great kudos to Kylie Zager for really taking her personal crusade to help others based upon the misfortune that she and her family endured as a child, losing her mom in their 40s. So again, thanks to the Breast Cancer Alliance, the YWCA, Yale New Haven Health, and all those who came. The room was full with folks. On May 2nd, Selectman Sandy Litback and I were here for the National Day of Prayer. The theme of this year's program was love one another. There was robust attendance from the various houses of worship in our town. And again, thank you to Nancy Henkes, who's the National Day of Prayer Coordinator. On May 3rd, I was presented with several works of art from prominent artists from China who are affiliated with the North American Chinese Cultural Foundation, which donated several pieces of their work right here in this room. We'll be working with local artist organizations to determine how best to display this work. This came to us through Greenwich Office of Sotheby's International. And when I say there is an abundance of art, there is enough to adorn, I think, every panel of this room. So if you have...
What form is the artic?
In terms of what type of genre is it?
Yeah, I mean, what does it look like?
It's varied. Some of nature, some symbolism, naturally some of it is interpretive, you have to be able to read Chinese. So they're looking forward to coming back. But again, I think it speaks to the fact Greenwich is notable enough that they chose to come here and present it, and they really want to develop an exchange. They mentioned that they have a resident who, of China, outside of Beijing, who's willing to host a artist from the area for a period of time. I don't recall the exact, whether it was three months or three years, but it was a considerable amount of time.
While you're on art?
Chinese art. There's a great exhibit down at the Bruce Museum right now on Chinese art, Fred Brooks' part, part of his collection. He is going to donate, or understand the rest of his collection eventually to the museum, but it's well worth going to see.
Thank you. Maybe I should appoint you as our cultural affairs minister for the balance of the term. You're on top of things.
At least with respect to Chinese art.
That's right.
It's a narrow specialty.
What specialty are you referring to?
That's it, specialty, no?
As, yeah, as is China.
Okay, next, on the 5th, which was Sunday, it was Israeli Independence Day. There was a flag raising held here sponsored by UJA JCC. And that program included Senator Richard Blumenthal and a concert with Gilad Paz and Mika Gilad. There was a number of crafts and activities. I was unable to be here for the beginning, but as on the tail end, I did see a number of people performing various crafts. And the room was adorned with children's art symbolizing support and pride in the relationship with the state of Israel. So that was Sunday. And then Tuesday, there was a bimonthly first selectman staff meeting. We received reports from many of the departments under updates. We covered the budget. Clearly, it's coming to culmination on Monday night. A number of our department heads are front and center to respond to a series of questions. I believe public safety, fire is primary to that. There's been some questions directed to public works as it relates to a bridge reconstruction project. And then other aspects, according to the finance and schools, relate to school-related capital projects. Mary Pepe covered a couple of items in her update related to workplace safety. The first one had to do with proper footwear, and these are all in draft form. She was looking for feedback, but there is an effort to, particularly as we get to the summer season, to properly enforce a no flip-flop wearing, which seemed trivial to me, but in fact, when you look at the data, it's a source of considerable twisted ankles, slips, and so forth. So that was one. And my mind is slipping. Do you recall the second? Oh, that had to do with retirees. The second one had to do with, we have a number of instances where we have retired town employees come back for a period of time. Mary has put forth a draft protocol that's a checklist in that it could be they need to be brought back because there's a period of time in which a new person has not been selected and they require assistance. There is a limitation on the number of hours. I believe it's no more than 15 hours per week pursuant to the fact that they're receiving a defined benefit, retirement. The other issue pertains to health care. Under, I believe, federal laws, there has to be a period of separation when they leave. I want to say 30 days. But she wanted to make department heads aware that this is going to be put into a policy, and she wanted their feedback. So that was her focal point. Just wondering if there's any relevance. Community first goals, we're coming upon the completion of that. These are goals established by departments tied to performance improvement, and they're maintained in our office with Blaze Levitan, who works with them to establish. So we're coming into the final quarter. Went to the distinguished teachers' annual ceremony this year. It was recognized Sean Herriman, Crystal Kisselman, Kate Mizarachi, Megan Ostrzuska, Chrisanne Powers, and Carrie Vale. And prior to that, we had a meeting over at the Greenwich Police Department involving representatives of various houses of worship and faith-based organizations. And this was to review security measures that can be put in place, working with the police department who will come out and do a risk assessment. What I took away from it is, one, there are presently relations between the houses of worship and our community impact officers. Two, these organizations are encouraged to call the police department for any incident or any concern they may have. There was a real emphasis on putting together a plan for your facility. And as was reaffirmed, it often is not the most catastrophic thing that you need to plan for, but what happens if there's a medical emergency in your facility? What happens if there were a fire or a natural occurrence related to damage or theft? The key thing was to, one, bring together your trustees, your stewards, and develop a plan. If you'd like the plan reviewed by PD, they're happy to do it. But you can't prepare unless you have a plan and then work to implement it and also practice it. There was representatives also from ADL, Steve Ginsberg, who's a close acquaintance of our towns and a lot of education here related to hate crimes. And what he said is that, at least in our area, a lot of what is being reported has to do with words and speech, not so much necessarily physical altercation, but they monitor it. Another takeaway was ADL monitors it. They have a whole unit who tracks incidents throughout, not only the country, I think the globe, as does the FBI. And this information is made available to local law enforcement. It also keeps contact to understand what's happening. And as I said, I think we all just have to be very vigilant. And if you see something that's not right or you have doubt, call Public Safety Dispatch and just let them know. That's what they're there for. And, you know, we're certainly vulnerable, as I said. I really believe we are vulnerable. If it could happen in the suburbs of San Diego, it can happen here, and I really believe that. So this was a good first step. I think there was over 60 attendees. And the good thing is now they've gotten a tighter network in terms of exchange of information. The final piece on this that I thought was earnest of her, Margarita Alvin from the Planning and Zoning reached out. And one of the things that she'd like to do is for her commissioners have a meeting with police to understand what are the current and best practices in design as they look at approving a lot of these institutions. She was, she would benefit, and her colleagues would, is knowing what can be done. I know that Greenwich Reform Synagogue and another organization, I don't remember which, so they took that into consideration when they went through their planning to think about it.
You know, just to add to what you said, when I spoke at Temple Shalom, one of the points I made was the point you just made, which is it can happen here. And the reason they track words, of course, words are a precursor to actions in many cases. And the point I made, and I think it's worth iterating again, is one of the greatest sins that we have is silence, not words. It's the people who say and do nothing and allow it to go on because it doesn't affect them directly at the time. That's where our problems arise. And if you look back in history, and whether you're talking about Germany or any other place, it's good people sitting silently by and not saying anything. That is a, again, a precursor to problems. So I think what you do is terrific. I applaud you for it. You and I have discussed it, and I told you I back it and think that what you're doing is just terrific.
Well, thank you. Thanks for all of your support. I mean, it's sad to say, but I truly believe, I mean, it could, it could happen.
Well, again, I said specifically, it can happen in Greenwich. If it can happen in Powerbury, it can happen in Greenwich, and it can happen anyplace.
Thanks to the PD for that. And the team there, Sergeant John Thorm, Captain Bob Berry, and GP Venus team. Finally, we're coming upon Memorial Day. I know that we'll be releasing the dates of the various events. I believe I counted seven, eight events over the course of that weekend. Ken and other media, I believe, have had, you've had news bulletins or community calendar, but we've got Saturday, May 25th, Koskow Volunteer Post Foreign Wars, that's 10:00 AM?
Oh, 10:30, I think.
10:30. Byram Veterans, Sunday, May 26th, 2:00 in front of Byram Vets. Sunday, May 26th, Glenville Volunteer Fire Department and Ninth District Vets, 5:00 PM. Monday, May 27th, American Legion Post 29, Indian Harbor Yacht Club, 8:00 AM. And almost simultaneously, there's a small ceremony over in Byram, near the McKinney Terrace, former Byram School. And I believe that is around 9:30. Now, that event is almost impossible for many of us to attend because it runs concurrent with the dockside service at Indian Harbor. What we are doing, and I believe will confirm this, is the Sound Beach Volunteer Fire Company Parade step-off, I believe, is at 10:00, and they ask you to be there by 9:30. I know that our Veterans Council is working to get that moved by a half hour. So it gives people the ability to, say more leisurely, get from one point of town to the other and not be abrupt and rude to the organizers of the other event. Finally, in Chickahominy, at Hamilton Avenue School, at 1:00 PM, they also have a memorial for the veterans who lived in that area, and that's at 1:00. We'll get this all out, but it's May 9th, so it'll be coming upon us quickly. Lastly, and we're going to be hearing from him shortly, Tyler Fairburn, our Community Development Block Grant Administrator. And I finalize the final running funding recommendations for the Community Development Block Grant Program for the 2019 program year. I want to commend the committee again for the diligence in putting together the recommendations. Tyler, you had said in the staff meeting, and I wrote it down, the number of agencies that we've been able to serve this year over last year went from like 22 to 36?
34.
34. I think that in itself shows a lot of diligence on the part of the committee to really pare down how they could take these finite dollars and make an impact. This year, we received 2% more than the current, or for next year, 2%. The big issue, and there's no sense beating the drum about it, is the Housing Authority did come in to replace, seek funding to replace kitchens in the Wilbur Pack community. There's no question the kitchens need to be replaced. No one's said otherwise. But the real challenge the committee have, and we have as the fiduciaries, is that currently the Housing Authority has had funding from prior year program years that they haven't fully expended. And HUD, Housing and Urban Development, closely monitors the expenditure of these dollars. If you do not expend the dollars in a timely fashion, you potentially jeopardize your future allocation of funding. That was the case this year. That's the reason why we couldn't go forward at this time. But I think everyone on that committee, and certainly myself, and I'm sure the next first selectman who's here next year, feels that we could, they could begin the project. They had considerable funds, I want to say a million, two? To begin them. If they could face them, then perhaps by the time this rolls around next year, they can receive some of this funding. So that was the only real issue on the part of any agency who came to the hearing. And again, I had appeals from members of the RTM on the committee to please not change their requests based upon that, and I concurred with that. I know I heard from Ms. Krasner about it, and I wrote her back and said I concurred with her. So it's now off to the BET, and then ultimately the RTM. And I want to commend you, Tyler, for your excellent administration of the program, and your communications have been tremendously effective. Thank you. Okay, that concludes lengthy updates. Now we have old business, no old business under new business. We have with us Tyler Fairburn, our Community Development and Grant Director. Today, we're being asked to review and pass on the 2019 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act program proposals. The Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act program allows for a tax credit to be earned by business firms that make cash investments of at least $250 in certain community programs. The cash investments must be made in a community program that is proposed and conducted by a tax-exempt or municipal agency. It must be approved both by the municipality in which the program is conducted and Connecticut Department of Revenue Services. One of Connecticut's... One of Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act program requirements is for the town governing body to hold a public hearing and vote to approve the proposals received. Documentation of all public hearing notices and minutes of the meeting approved, approving the programs must be submitted to the Department of Revenue Service no later than July 1, 2019. To meet the requirements, under Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act program, applications proposed will be reviewed for approval by both the Board of Selectmen and the RTM. The May 9th meeting will constitute the town's public hearing on the Neighborhood Assistance Act program. So at this time, I would open the public hearing on it. Tyler, perhaps you could just speak, because you've had direct engagement with those who are seeking?
Absolutely. So I had to do a bit of a refresher myself when this comes across my desk every year. It's really, we're the liaison for the town to the state. This is a program that Governor Balaan has kept active, where private companies who wish to, you know, kind of do good in the community can make an investment, a cash investment in exchange for a tax credit in programs that come into the town. So we did a 30-day application period. We have quite a bit of overlap with our CDVG applicants and then the applicants for this program. I think actually all of the applicants for Neighborhood Assistance Act also received some CDVG funding for similar projects and programs. So we had seven applicants this year. I reviewed the applications to be sure that they are in line with the requirements of the program. They all were. So after our meeting today, this goes to the RTM, who will, if approved, we send it up to the state by July 1st. After that, businesses who are interested in taking advantage of the tax credit have a, it's like a two-week window from September 15th to October 1st, to submit their version of the application forms to the state, and then the state lets us know in December if there are any matches there between applicants and, yes, sorry, any matches between applicant organizations and businesses who are interested in taking advantage of the tax credit. I believe last year, the YMCA was the only applicant who was matched up, which was, I believe because they have a board member who is, you know, has a connection to one of the bigger banks who was interested in participating. We had seven applicants this year. Kids in Crisis, YMCA, River House, Family Centers had three applications, and the Boys and Girls Club.
I'm sorry, what do you mean by when you say matched up?
So the businesses who apply for the tax credit can come in with a project in mind. So if you are JP Morgan and you have a connection to the Greenwich Boys and Girls Club, you can, in your application, identify that project as the one that you want to invest $100,000 in. There's an off chance that if you are, you know, Family Centers or River House, and you're just submitting an application, that perhaps, you know, if it's an energy efficiency project, say, you know, maybe EverSource or Aquarian looks at the list and says, I picked that one.
But if no one picks it, they don't get, there's no tax credit.
Correct.
Is that correct?
If no one picks it, your project...
Project doesn't go, and therefore there's no tax credit.
There's no tax credit for the entity that... Right.
So if, just to get to the, so if they put down $150,000, no one matches up, they get zero?
Correct.
With respect to that.
Exactly. No cost to the town, we really know.
Well, no cost to the state, no cost to anybody.
No cost to the state, too, right.
So what criterion do you apply? In other words, seven people came forward, seven entities came forward and asked for money. What criterion do you apply? I mean, why are we doing anything other than rubber stamping it? Because if someone wants to invest in it, fine. If no one wants to invest in it, it doesn't happen. So what are we doing?
Exactly. We are just, my guess as to why we're the front end of it is just to save the state in that initial review period. So what we're sending to the state knows that whatever we've sent along has at least passed some bare minimum threshold of eligibility, which is really just that the project serves low.
Yeah, it sounds like this whole thing is to be cynical, just one big political nonsense. You know, okay, that's fine. I was going to comment, but my comment is irrelevant, and I'll make it anyway, but it is irrelevant. I was struck by the fact, just looking at it, and I know nothing about this, Tyler, how many, on an eyeball basis, the percentage of salaries in relation to the amount of money that they get? In some cases, they're spending 90% of the money they collect on salaries.
Yes.
That's shocking. Well, shocking. I'm not shocked by much, so it's not shocking, but it's disappointing and troubling. It had nothing to do with you, obviously.
No, and I think, you know, certainly on some of these programs, you know, I'm thinking particularly the ones that, who are applying for services rather than like an energy upgrade. I mean, Kids in Crisis and Family Centers, I mean, that's really, I mean, that's really all they have. I mean, they don't, they're offering services, so they don't really have any other kind, I mean, other than like their capital needs, which they may address on their own if they're not applying for this credit for that. I mean, they're really just providing a service, and so their product is their staff.
So that's what...
Which I think kind of explains it on that end.
That's interesting. I hadn't focused on that.
Yeah, I know, you know, Family Centers, in particular, there are three, it's kind of three unique programs that would require staff with different specialties to address the needs of those people, the clients they serve.
Tyler, other than this meeting, RTM meeting, how do businesses find out about this? What's the mechanism aside from this?
Yeah, so I mean, I think, I think some are just kind of tuned into it through, you know, their connections with maybe local municipal officials or state officials. And then I think, I think a big part of this, and they don't really make this, you know, as apparent in the program description, but I think it's kind of inherent to the process, is that, you know, you need to, if you're the organization, you need to work your contacts, you know, your board, your neighborhood groups, the neighborhood businesses, things like that.
How long has this program been in existence, do you know?
I am not sure. I remember it when I was in Bridgeport, which was six or seven years ago, so it's been around since at least that long.
But it does sound like one where, as you say, if you're in one of these organizations and you have a tie to JP Morgan or EverSource or whomever, that's the way it happens. And if you don't, it probably doesn't happen.
I think, I think it's, I think it's kind of a needle in the haystack to just blindly put something in and then have someone pick it. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's been around for at least a couple decades. I remember it on the BET and the RTM.
So it goes way back.
Yeah, and they do, they do cap it. I think in the past, it's been like $5 million statewide, so there is, I think the state does cap the amount of credits they're willing to give.
Do they, do they get much? I mean, you said with respect to Greenwich, only the YMCA had a match, and I'm just wondering, statewide, does that amount to much?
The bigger cities, Hartford, New Haven, Bridgeport, will get a lot, you know.
Great. Okay, you need a motion to approve this? Sure, I'll move it.
Second.
Without objection.
Thank you very much for having the Neighborhood Assistance Act on the agenda.
Thank you. You've been a busy, a busy guy this month. Okay, item B was just to change the start time of our next meeting.
Two?
I think you're really hitting it.
Two?
Oh, two, two?
Yeah, from 10 to 2?
It's the 23rd, is it?
Yeah.
Twenty-third, next meeting, 23rd?
23rd.
This room isn't available at that time.
Well, let's check to make sure.
Yeah, sure. I'll move it.
Oh, I want to make, you guys are all right with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a move in second, without objection.
Does that come with lunch?
What kind of sandwich do you want?
Okay, appointments and nominations, and then executive session. Ms. Hines, in addition to this interview, do we have any other matters in the executive session?
At this point, no. It's just this one and two.
Okay.
Do I need a motion for executive session?
So move.
Okay, without objection.
And when I go to the movies, I pay senior price. See, that's where you can try, but they make it 60 or 62, so you're still unqualified. Sorry.
You just get the card.
Recently, somebody asked me to prove my age. I said, "Well, thank you."
That's so nice, yeah. That's so nice. When I order a drink, I always seem to say, "Don't you want to see my driver's license?"
Yeah, and I always say, "Thank you" when they put things in.
This is a resumption of the regularly scheduled board meeting. We just returned from executive session where we conducted an interview for a town board and commission. I believe there's no action at this meeting today. We may be scheduling a brief meeting telephonically in the near term to finalize our appointments or nominations. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Without objection.